My colleagues, maybe Charlie, but no one else.
Well, I'm not gonna kiss you again, but forget about it.
You're the cause of it.
That's how ugly rumors start.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Now, Mary, if you'd like to know the facts, I think I got it. Thank you. Celebrate my new tires.
New tires?
The small things in life, those are amazing. Except they're not that cheap anymore.
That paddle, what was that, northern drive?
Yeah, I don't know if you want it, but I put a reuse envelope for you.
Yeah, that was a good one.
You should try to tell California people. My daughter tries to tell California kids what they're doing. No, I don't.
All you have to do is, well, it's a big bear. Walk the mountains outside of the way you go, big bear, you gotta have chains on them.
Well, they got, everybody has to have chains. That they understand, they didn't understand that they're especially. You could have smoke cars and they still could put chains on them.
But anyway, data's changing.
See that? You go, you in bed home since this morning?
So, Joe.
You said you're scared.
What changed? What changed?
Just basically, yeah. So, it was like 20 years ago.
Right.
We didn't even.
Because this is where it.
That all stayed. It just, yeah, confusion. I couldn't even talk to your story.
Yeah.
I couldn't do it.
I think it just went, just went.
Yeah. No, I don't. Who?
I had a certain queue in those guys for three.
You said.
Well, they may shoot for seven, eight, twelve thousand.
I asked.
Yeah. Very, they love that. Who is?
They're ready from.
Her, just the officer. Or that's Martha.
Well, there it is.
That's what I.
Turn off.
Yeah, we gotta turn on her.
For me, I said, everything.
Why don't you just turn the radio off? Is there a timeframe for when you have to issue, submit application?
But this is in case.
I wish I had.
I have a question about, like, if you can't operate anything, and most of the time, this doesn't work.
Before or after, is that in here? Is it in here?
I like to have a cover.
So, they get this great, bright orange cover, which is fake. And then, on the backside, they've got camouflage.
Yeah, like, really, so if you drop it up face down, you're screwed.
No.
I used to see, yeah, the camouflage.
That's fine.
It was like, what's the point of that?
So, you're talking about, oh, we didn't. I'm sorry. I really hate. We're trying this stuff five seconds before the meeting.
Well, it has nothing to do with.
Are you gonna, uh, are you gonna bring out the?
Can you show me where it says, when you. I read it.
That's part of it. Have you got the language, too, please?
Well, no. I don't.
No, I don't remember. I mean, I believe you got it there.
I don't.
No, I don't.
I read it, but I just didn't.
Mary, damn it.
Because it's like, can you brush your ass? Like, can you use?
Well, you'll be able to take a pulse to see if people are interested.
Yeah, well, I know.
I don't know how much we wanna put on the consumers anymore, anyway.
Um, I don't know how much we wanna put on taxpayers in the future either.
Right.
So, I think we have to.
But I might be able to.
Plan for that by assuming that we'd like to go in that direction. You can use these words, or those words.
It being seven o'clock, I'll call this regular meeting to order of the Northfield Select Board. All present and accounted for. Everyone join us in the public allegiance place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any need to adjust the agenda?
No need to adjust.
First item, there is no public participation scheduled. Next item is approval minutes. Approval minutes of nine, January.
Second.
Moving to second, the comments, questions, Charlie?
Nothing.
Mary?
On page two, in the one, two, three, third paragraph.
Yes.
Down on page two. Did you get, yeah? And then, on the second line, it says, using the income interest. I think you wanna reverse those two words, interest, income. That's all.
That's it?
That's it.
John?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Lydia, again.
I'm good.
I'm good. Further discussion on January ninth minutes. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Five, zero, zero. Make motion to approve the minutes of fourteen, January.
Second.
Moving to second, the comments, questions, Charlie?
None.
Mary?
None.
None.
John? Lydia?
On the first page, at the bottom, when it's talking about VORC. It says, Ms. Voro, then thank the Select Board members for authorizing that forty thousand in American Rescue Funds to be used to supplement grant funds for wayfinding. It should say twenty-five thousand there. The forty thousand was for the BYCC project, which is also trail-related.
Good catch.
And then, on the second page, at the very bottom, it says, Board Member Petty asks if existing nonprofits might be interested in getting involved, should this new local nonprofit organization be established? And my question was, not whether they would get involved with a new nonprofit, but whether they could be used instead of creating a new nonprofit. So, it was like, if existing nonprofits might be interested in helping Northfield with that work, rather than starting, starting our own. It's almost the last sentence at the bottom of page two.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Should I just remove that sentence, though?
You could remove the part where it says, getting involved with the new nonprofit, because I was asking about existing nonprofits that might serve the same purpose without us creating a new one.
So, Board Member Petty asked if existing nonprofits might be interested.
Yeah, that would work.
Sounds good.
That's it.
I will soon. Further discussion on January fourteenth minutes. Hearing none. All those in favor of said minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Five, zero, zero. Approval of bills. Make a motion to approve warrant fourteen, twenty-five, A through B.
Second.
Moving to second, then Charlie?
I'm good.
Mary?
I'm fine.
John?
On page seventeen, there is a charge for a motor. My question is, what was that motor for?
Yeah, so, the municipality had received, we talked about this, received a very large factor from Lyndonville. And the sale was done through folks at A and R. Anyway, so, we obtained this fairly new jetter. We had it, it's been used, and unfortunately, it was, it turned out, when they were working on it, some, there was an issue with the motor. So, the motor really had to be overhauled and rebuilt.
And John, I'll bring to your attention, it's not five thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. It's twenty-five thousand, or is it twenty?
We're getting some back from.
Okay. It's over twenty-five. That got my attention, too, John.
Yeah, I figured that would come up.
It started in three different places.
Actually, four.
Yeah, so, because it is used by four different departments, we decided to break that. It, yeah, you say it was a disheartening, but it's a very important machine. You know, helps clean out catch basins, it helps.
You had it in the budget, I hope.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I got, thank you.
Lydia?
I was just gonna comment that I was happy to see the speed warning signs were purchased, and I'm hoping that they work better than the ones that we have had, and.
Yeah, actually, they were probably purchased about a month and a half ago. We didn't get the invoice till, but yeah. So, when it gets a little bit warmer, we're gonna get those up. And they are much more specific. They will also record on a running basis, volumes plus speed limits.
Great.
But it does not take a photo, record anybody, like some states have, where you would get the license plate and send them a ticket. We will not be sending folks tickets for this.
It does not record that information.
Right. It doesn't have a camera that, but it does, it's a little bit suited up in that it does do traffic counts plus counts for speeding.
So, we're gonna have some data.
Yes.
Yeah, the data would be great.
Well, the old machine provided that, too.
Oh, did it?
Pretty basic, like, you're right, not to this level, but you're right.
And are they solar, or are they?
Yes, that's my question, may I?
I had the same question. I was wondering if they've been deployed, and when will they?
That was my only.
That's all I had. My thing was on page seven, which was John's question. Further discussion, I'll warn. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving warrant fourteen, twenty-five, and fourteen, twenty-five, A through B, in the amount of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and ninety-one cents, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Five, zero, zero. Make a motion to acknowledge the biweekly payroll from, through January nineteenth, for total one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Moving to second, any comments, questions from Select Board members? Hearing none. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of receipt of biweekly payroll through January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars, ninety-six cents, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Five, zero, zero. Under Select Board, approval of the twenty-twenty-five Northfield Town Meeting Warning. Move approval of the twenty-twenty-five Annual Warning.
Second.
Moving to second, comments, questions, Charlie?
Article five and six, just wondered if having a date, it says effective for the twenty-sixth Town Meeting, if it's approved? I know this language is pretty generic, but if there is a revote on, if there's a petition after this Town Meeting, then it would get confusing whether we would have an Australian ballot based on that vote, if it's approved. So, I think, just putting in, the effective date of twenty-twenty-six would be.
It might even say that in the statute. I can't remember, but I think it's effective a year later, in the statute.
And this is just.
But putting it in, I don't object to putting it in. I think more information's better.
Yep. So, what would you?
This will be put up on the floor, so it can be explained at the time.
Yep.
Can I just say what it is, so people who are here know what it is? Okay, Article five is, shall the town of Northfield adopt its budget article or articles by Australian ballot, blah, 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 pursuant to VSA seventeen, but it's subsection six? Never mind. Anyway, that's that one. And then, the next one says, shall the town of Northfield vote on all public questions by Australian ballot pursuant to VSA seventeen, et cetera? So, that's what that's about. And he wanted to say effective twenty-twenty-six.
Correct.
That was not the next day.
Just to clarify when we're going to have Australian ballot. If that, if it, so, what would happen is, this is going to be on the floor. It's gonna be a floor vote. So, people attend Town Meeting and say yea or nay to this. And then, by statute, take effect the next Town Meeting in twenty-twenty-six. But, for the purpose of clarifying for this Town Meeting, so people don't get confused thinking that there's an Australian ballot out there for budget issues, we're gonna say effective twenty-twenty-six. Keeping it, keeping the mud clear. Which means, if we change it, we're gonna have to come in and sign it. Ken lets us know it's been revised.
Actually, you can send one there. I can change the wording above, as long as you approve them.
Okay.
I think I did it last year, when you would change tanks to reservoirs.
He's done it before.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll start, Charlie?
I don't see anything else.
Barry?
I'm good.
I'm good, John.
On the same articles as Charlie, it's not about the warning exactly, but I would like to make a request that we all consider whether we could ask the manager to write an explanation of how that process works and post that to the public, because I think there's a lot of confusion about, and you have to do it in this way, on the floor. You can't just switch to Australian ballot. It has to happen this certain way. And I don't think just explaining what those articles mean, and like Charlie's saying, when they would be effective, and that it has to happen on the floor. This is the only, there's only one way you can do it, so that people are really clear about what's being asked.
Effectively, Town Meeting would end.
Well.
The open session.
Yeah, the open session is.
Voting on substantive.
We would.
Budgetary matters in, voting in general, yeah.
I think.
You could have discussions. You could have a Town Meeting, and many towns that have done this still do.
But those spirited discussions would, about the budget would.
Well, you could continue to have spirited discussions. You're just couldn't make changes on the floor.
Still, I give discussions. I've been giving this a lot of thought. The public certainly has plenty of, plenty of time for input and discussions regarding our budget during the budget process. And that's where I really wish our constituents would engage.
And we could even do, like, some of those other towns' special, public-focused budgetary meetings to try to engage people more before we agree on a budget.
I don't know how much more we could do. I mean, how many budgets are we at?
I know.
Maybe six to eight.
I think what we would be doing would be, like, change, well, not just saying it's a budget meeting, but giving it a special name, and then doing, like, a whole marketing campaign to the public of like, this is your opportunity, come, and maybe we'll give you a cookie or something.
Yes, Elroy, the eye of the full board. Put that on Australian ballot, and Elroy's gonna be the official cookie maker in North. I second that motion.
That's all, I don't have any others. That's the warning.
I'm fine. Just explain to me, I ask this every year, what's the process? Now, we're putting our requests that we received from the various nonprofits or NGOs.
Yeah, so, if an organization has been on the ballot for three years, and they're not making any, any change in their request, we automatically put them on.
And in the past, we've had other people speak to us. When does that occur?
Yeah, sometime February, we'll set that up.
So, that's after the fact. It's on the ballot.
Second meeting in February.
Got it.
They'll all be invited to come in.
We send a letter out to organizations for a meeting in February. We'll have the opportunity to come and speak to each, to their specific article.
Further discussion?
Well, I remember Charlie talking about the money for the commuter bus. And we finally got that changed in Town Meeting.
Yeah, that was, that was just unfortunate, because it was, the transparency was not there on the decision in the minutes. And, and we did change that. And we added that money to the budget from Town Meeting, because it wasn't clear that the decision had been made to remove that from the budget until the budget came out and it had been approved. So, once that occurred, then you have the opportunity at Town Meeting to put that back in the budget. And at the same time, you can take money out of the budget. It doesn't.
So, for having it at Town Meeting, you can adjust the budget?
That's correct.
By having it on Australian ballot, you cannot adjust the budget?
Yes, sir, you're absolutely right.
Okay.
I don't remember that, but that incident with the bus, what happened there?
Oh, my goodness, I remember that very well.
What happened? Seriously. Well, so, what happened was the commuter funding had been in place, and then, at the, and had been, in the minutes, that it was going to be kept in place during the whole budget process. And at the last budget meeting, it was removed without anybody's notification. So.
You mean, without anybody on this board, or?
No, no, the Select Board made the decision to approve the budget, and they removed the funding for the commuter bus.
Interesting.
But that's, that's when I stood up and said, that's not right, because your minutes didn't reflect what your actions were. And I got up there, and I was supported considerably by a large number of people. Very good. That is, that is a benefit of doing that in Town Meeting, but I'm of the persuasion that it's, I think, a fair to have it on Australian ballot. I think it's, it's okay to let the people ask. I remember, we had, I think it was two hundred and fifty dollars for picnic benches, two picnic benches up at the park. We approved two million dollars in spending with a vote, with very little discussion. There was two hours of discussion about two picnic tables for two hundred and fifty dollars.
I remember that.
And that's what I love about Town Meeting.
Yeah, what kind of picnic tables were they?
They were solid, man. They were solid. They weren't, they were just standard issue. They weren't even handicap accessible, because we didn't have that mindset back then. Not handicap.
They're still in service. They're, they're still in service. Well-spent money.
I think Town Meeting would be a great fundraiser for any group. Hot luck. Let everybody come in. We've got, and, and turn it into a fun thing. No alcohol. But I, you know, any group that wants to raise money, you know, once everybody realizes, hey, this is an event, it would be a lot of fun.
It used to be like that.
Right. It's a community, it still is.
And, yeah.
Winkelmore is.
Well, if we keep it, I think we should work harder to make it an event. Some of it could be us doing that.
Oh, assist you in any way you wanna do that, Lydia.
We should make sure we advertise all our, like, committees and commissions, that they can have a temple, and.
I think we've done that, maybe not to the great extent. And we've also changed the time of the day of meeting.
Changes the vibe of it, for sure.
But the bottom line is, we don't have a lot of participation.
How did that, how did, what happened last year, the?
We need twenty minutes. Meeting was twenty-two minutes long.
Right, what happened last year with the Australian ballot, but though, how did that?
The budget was accidentally placed on the ballot, Australian ballot.
The results were published.
Right.
But it was printed, and so.
How did that happen? Jeff?
Well.
Not Jeff. It was a mistake by the Town Clerk.
It's not, sure.
And it makes sense.
Whether it was a mistake or not, or.
We had done it that way for COVID.
We need to have more eyes.
Yeah, we're gonna, it'll be.
Oh, I'm sure there won't be, that won't happen again. It's on the ballot, so.
There'll be three, four of us checking the ballot before it was, we weren't aware of it.
And Town Report. We had one instance where the Town Report, there was three pages of data for the village that were, nobody had ever seen, which eventually led to merger, which is a good thing. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Northfield's twenty-twenty-five Town Morning for a annual meeting with the additions for Article five and six as provided, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Well, four, one, zero. Next item, tax stabilization policy and application, Mr. Manager.
Okay. It was maybe ten-plus years or more ago, the Select Board did approve a tax stabilization, tax stabilization policy. And then, subsequent to that, the voters did grant approval for the actual, for the municipality to actually enter into tax stabilization agreements. As you can see from what they approved, it talks about an application. Looked back and, and could find what looked like some form of an application, but we never saw that the board actually officially approved the application. So, in anticipation of some applications coming in, we dusted that off and noticed that the application, whatever form was really, was not there. We couldn't see that it was ever approved. So, we did.
Oh.
We did put together, we did put together an application, tried to approve things that were discussed in the policy. And just to keep things moving, we looked for the board to adopt the drafted application.
Move approval of the tax, tax stabilization application.
Second.
Discussion.
Who's phone number is ninety-eight twenty on here? Forty-five ninety?
What are you referring to?
On the top of the application.
Got it. Voice mail?
Who's voice?
I have no idea. It says voice.
Is that, is that Tom's? I don't know. Over, you know, actually, I think.
Okay.
I think it's, it's supposed to be two, two. But good catch.
What is this supposed to be?
Ninety-two-two. Good catch, Charlie.
You already have, you have the numbers memorized, Charlie?
I just didn't recognize the number, whenever I used to.
You have your number, I know.
And we didn't have a ninety-eight twenty. Anyway, that's cool. I, other than knowing Mary has some thoughts about whether she's gonna address some stuff, so I'll contain down.
There you go, Mary.
First of all, I wanna, I wanna thank you for bringing this up. Ten years ago, before my time. And so, I had a chance to look at the tax stabilization policy and the application, and I realized that lots of things have changed. I realized that lots of things have changed in the thinking of this town about how we have to confront the 21st century and the kinds of, of energy that we need to, we need to prepare for, for our children. And so, also, we know that that's going to be costly. So I have some ideas that our policy should consider inducing recipients. So we use carrots here, and induce the recipients to add geothermal infrastructure, or to not include additional fossil fuel burning stuff. Because it's just gonna cost the taxpayers more money in the long run to fix it. So why should we give them a tax advantage to do something we're gonna have to undo in the future? And so I would like to see if it requires, now Charlie thinks it requires that we have to reexamine the policy. But I think possibly we could do this through the application with the addition of a question. Does, how does the, how do the recipients plan to, you know, include geothermal infrastructure? Or how do the recipients plan, you know, that would be how I would ideally like to do it.
So your goal is to get rid of fossil fuel?
Well, that's my ultimate goal.
Right, so, uh, so on, alright, I was thinking on policy side, so in the application, well, how would you do that?
So my question to the manager is, if an addition, as a condition to the state tax stabilization policy, does that need to be voted approved?
I don't, I don't see that it does. Then the, the vote, the actual vote was fairly broad and it had left it to the select board.
And there are, there are, I've invited people from the Energy Committee, which is where, I mean, like, you could put in a thimble all the stuff I know about geothermal energy networks. But I do know that these people know a great deal, because I, Charlie and I came to a, um, a presentation that they did. And so they're prepared to talk about that.
Mary, are you suggesting that they would be required as part of the application, or that it would be a, that it would be a, I'm just trying to understand? Or that it would be a, like, bonus if they're doing something like that?
Me?
Yes, what are you suggesting?
Personally?
Well, what are you actually suggesting?
I'm suggesting that it be a requirement.
Ooh.
Okay, now you can knock that down. But that's where I'm starting from.
Well, on the, on the, let's see, so page one of the application, make sure they're all sticky fingers, on the back is a blank, which is project description, it says criteria considered during preliminary review by the economic subcommittee and review by the select board include, and it lists a bunch of things. Could you possibly say the reduction of use of fossil fuel or alternatives to fossil fuel? Is that, would that be a place? I'm shooting off the hip here, by the way.
That's, that's the more, and also, we have things in our town plan about reducing energy consumption.
Right.
And so it could be, there's already pieces in here about it being complimentary to the town plan. So you could pull some language from the town plan.
So what if somebody comes, what if somebody comes and the part of their plan is that they're going to put in an oil-fired boiler? Are we gonna give them 25, uh, uh, 75, then, then 50, and then 25% tax exemption? So that they can do something that later our children are gonna have to pay to get undue?
Well, I, no, no, I think that's very, um, audible and it's, it's a good thing to look at. But I think you have to look at, even though it was 10 years ago, you do have to look at what was behind this policy. And again, it was, you know, economic, economic development effort to entice business. And that, that was the, the main goal. So I, you know, I think at this point to take that drastic step would be, you know, counterintuitive to what this, what the voters had, had tried to do.
This, this, was this, this was a voted on thing?
It was.
Then I think it's important that the voters understand that this is not a change in their intention. This is a refinement.
Well, it's, you, you, the way you first phrased it was a condition.
Well, it's a refinement. It says, you know, we want development in this state. We want development in our town. We want development enough so that, you know, we're willing to support changes to Act 250, et cetera, et cetera. However, we're not gonna support development that makes sense in the 20th century when we're in the 21st century.
So, I, I'm gonna come into town, I'm gonna put in a 10,000 square foot building, I'm gonna put a 5,000 square foot building, I don't have enough money for 10,000. So, and I'm gonna go with heat pumps. Northfield's got excellent electric chargers, I'm gonna put in heat pumps. At 20 below zero, heat pumps don't pick up the load. So I'm gonna have an alternative energy source to heat pumps. Because that's what I gotta do. So the way to hedge my side is I can put in a propane or a fossil fuel-fired backup to the heat pumps.
How about wood pellets?
That's my choice. It's a choice.
I mean, we wanna encourage the right things.
Oh, I'm down with it.
Yeah.
Well, that's why we're having this discussion.
Somebody's got their hand up over there.
I've never been to one of these. Are we allowed to talk, or you guys do your thing and we?
Normally not, but go ahead.
No, I can, I can.
No, go ahead.
Well, what I was gonna say is.
Can you identify yourself?
I'm, I'm Patrick Meehan, I'm on the Energy Committee.
Yep.
In terms of specifically to the 20 below thing, that's the reason that we're promoting the geothermal heat pumps.
Yep.
Because by drilling a well, you access constant 45, 50 degree source for your energy. So if you did put that building in, you could size a heat pump that was based on geothermal instead of air to pick up the load for your building for heating and cooling all year. And the bigger the space, the more economical geothermal system becomes. And if the town buys into it, it becomes even more economical because you're sharing that initial capital cost among a lot of, a lot of buildings or a lot of residents. But aside from that.
So you're saying a central place?
A central system, but even like people put them in for their homes, the bigger the building you have, or the bigger the network you have, the more cost-effective it is per ton of heating or cooling. So if someone comes and they build a single-family home, it doesn't make sense for them to have their own well. They could, it just would be expensive. If a 10,000 square foot warehouse got put in, it would become more economical for them to drill a few of their own wells, even outside of a community-connected system. And that would be a reliable, as long as the, the electricity is reliable, a reliable way for them to heat and cool their building. You know, propane boiler doesn't do anything for you in the summer. So have an air conditioner, which is just a heat pump.
And, and to add to that, Pat, I mean, I really think through this bill, you know, we really wanted.
Can you identify yourself with the?
My name is Joe Wantuck, I'm on the Energy Committee. You know, the, the town's role here is really to incentivize development of an interconnected system. And I can speak more on this later, but, and, and I, I think if we're gonna mix this into this bill specifically, we shouldn't use geothermal, but more high-efficiency electric, um, heating and cooling systems. Just to, just to make it more broad, I think would be a good idea. But yeah, the way I see it is the town can, and, and the town can also incentivize interconnectedness of the system and, and, yeah.
So there's, there's more discussion, as Mary mentioned, we both attended the, the conference that these guys had. And I immediately called up Minaj up in Morrisville and started talking about, I'm interested. Because I've got a 25-year-old outside wood burning system, does a great job, but I know it's gonna die one of these days. And welding it is going to be dirty. So, Minaj says, gave, gave me just over the phone, they haven't made a site visit yet, but they gave me a price, it was $60,000 for the house. And I was like, all right, yeah, this is forever, this is a 100-year-old plan. This is, this is gonna go for 100 years. And then they said, well, yeah, so we're gonna, the square footage and all the specs that you've given over the phone, we're gonna drill two, 300-foot, six-inch wells, and then we're gonna fill it with ethylene glycol. No, you're not. You're not gonna put 500 gallons of ethylene glycol in my ground when I've got my own well. So, and we haven't had, we, that, that discussion ended, so there's a lot to talk about when it comes to geothermal. And we're not going to have a conference about that tonight at this meeting, unless it's a big guy says we are. Right, so.
Application, really.
The alternative to fossil fuel language could go on the back of that as, as an idea, but it's, uh, to, and Joe said the right words. He said, we, we don't wanna point just to geothermal. That's a good point.
Yeah, it should be a good call some language from the town plan about energy and add it to the list of criteria that would be considered. I would be fine with that.
Me too.
Yeah, I think like you guys need to, like, if you have broad power based on what the voters gave you, you guys get to decide what's important to you, you know, it doesn't, if, you know.
But that's a broader discussion, not for tonight.
Yeah, exactly. Like, I, I agree, but it's, you know, if energy is a priority to you and that's a priority to the town, like, I think it's worth, it's worth putting in there in some context, but I agree, I would keep it broad. You don't wanna,
No.
you know, force people to do something that they don't want.
Yeah, and I think, Mary said a carrot, and to me, a carrot is encouraging or saying that their application would be more competitive if they were doing some of these things versus like you must. I'm, I'm not willing to put a.
And the other thing is, let's face it, they're in, they're in business to be in business and to make a profit. For, you know, they're building an apartment house. So what's the burden gonna be on the developer that's passed through the, to the renters or to the purchasers of the condo, whatever model they're doing? And by paying them into one corner, I think that would be a hindrance to developers. Where broader language would help foster maybe adoption.
I like that approach. Can we come up with a language?
He had some.
But Lydia had a good suggestion that we take it from the town report, or the town.
Right, but then we're not gonna, do we wanna see that language? Or we're just gonna say have management take the language?
Well, is there a timeline crunch here? What's, what's the, what's the timeline, Mr. Manager?
Another two weeks would be fine, but after that, I, I think.
Okay, I'm down with.
Could you tell us exactly how much this might be? How much of?
We're not, we're not talking about a specific item right now, right? We're just talking about.
You mean a, a project in line?
We're not talking about a specific project. We are talking about the policy and the application.
There's no application in front of us.
Or, or before the town.
Right.
I anticipate in the next couple of months.
In the next couple of months, you anticipate a tax stabilization request? So let's get this language in here to make it, just demonstrate that, uh, you know, we, we're considering all altern, alternatives. And then.
High efficiency, that word was nice.
And then from.
High efficiency electric.
And then from the Energy Commission, Committee. I think comprehensive. Now, you made a presentation and Marion, but a presentation for all of us would be nice. I did exactly what Charlie did about eight years ago. Called Minaj, got an estimate. Mine was more. I think because mine's a bigger square footage.
It's with the girl, the big one.
Charles, I'll see you outside. It's, it's expensive. But maybe as, like you, you're saying, a broader approach, similar to what Mount Bluey did with their wood fire.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the reasons why we came tonight, is just to let you all know that, um, you know, the, the appointments are on the agenda later, but we have a five-person committee now. And we are very well postured to pursue this more this year. And so one thing that we will need at some point is just all of the, the town projects that are gonna be going on this year. So we can start making an actual plan.
Well, the manager could provide that at any moment.
Great, great.
It's on the tickler file.
And, and we will be happy to do a presentation.
Just get it, get on the agenda and do it.
As soon as.
So we're gonna table a motion?
Are we, we're still going around with select board questions? I have a couple.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have questions, John?
No.
Has our attorney reviewed the policy lately?
No, please, sorry, there, there was review as I look back 12 or 11 years ago.
Yeah, can we get fresh eyes on it?
Sure, yeah, that's cool.
And, um, there was a little bit of chatter before the meeting. I was wondering, I still don't see in here where it says when a business owner or developer has to, what timeframe they have to apply within.
So there is in here, it is kinda buried in there.
If that can be more clear in the application, as well as, if you can point it to me. Because.
It does say six months.
Because somebody retroactively?
It says six months.
I did this two years ago and I wanna, it should be really clear that.
Oh, here we go, on the top of page three. Restrictions of the application. Restrictions of the application projects that not, have not begun
Okay.
construction. With, with the exception of any project or, yeah, so in for each other.
Yep, maybe that can be on the application too, just so that's really crystal clear. I don't want people being confused or.
Yeah.
Feeling. Thank you for pointing it out. I did read it.
I know I was a little, when you brought up it.
So, and then right below that, it says criteria considered during preliminary review by the economic subcommittee. Could we also have the energy subcommittee as part of that review process?
They're welcome to come to the meeting.
They're welcome to come to what meeting?
Meeting. The Economic Development is, Committee is a subcommittee of the select board and therefore will hold an open meeting. Just like if things go in the run of DRB, anybody, including members of committees and commissions, can come. If we start stacking up how many committees you have to go through to get approvals.
Yeah. I, I, in general, I think that inducements like this should be used by policymakers as part of policy. And if we wanted to have a policy, for example, that improved walkability and accessibility, maybe we wanna think about, about sidewalks as a consideration when we look at these projects.
Well, I know that topic came up for discussion when we were doing the Wall Street, um, study, right?
And some of it might belong more in zoning bylaws than, than tax stabilization.
Yeah, and I think at the time, I don't know, I was the one that brought it up. You know, condition of the approval of a development for the developer to build sidewalks. That, and then Tom, I remember him stating this, so I don't, I think it was answering my question, said, well, Northfield's never done that before. This would be a new policy that would have to be adopted. You shook your head. Do you remember that too? Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, the.
So I think tax stabilization and, like you said, maybe zoning or is another policy that requires developers, and we need to give, give them way aheads up, this is what is expected in Northfield, not just because Tom, Dick and Harry decided they're gonna build fifty apartments here. Well, now we're gonna put conditions on that, that's before, that's after they have done their due diligence.
But the, I don't care, really, I have no vested interest either way, but if you're concerned about whether it's thou shalt or whether if you do, then this is the best way to get if you do. And thou shalt is the best way to go through zoning, if you wanna, if you wanna impose this.
Yes, I agree with that one.
And it could be added to the list, Mary, of criteria that's considered, if you want to add another thing about.
It should be added to, yeah, I don't know.
I'm not opposed to that.
Walkability requirements, or I don't know what language you want, but.
The economic subcommittee ought to be thinking holistically about our doubt.
Well, this, this board considered a request long ago, not too long ago, maybe two years ago, about building infrastructure before a project was built. And most of the members on this, most of the members in this board wanted to know the details and what the requirements would be. But we, we did not get those details.
No, we never did, but I think asking the question was not untoward.
Agreed.
I remember that, I was newbie, but I remember that.
All right, so we're gonna table this. We've come such a long way, and we're talking about geothermal heat and the other one of the, other version of those. We've got two, and the other one has, uh, Northfield coal. Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah.
Next item on the agenda, Northfield cemetery fee adjustments.
Thank you very much for coming.
As recalled, Bruce Wright, who maintains the cemeteries in Sykesville, is here during the budget process and writing that the cemetery fees be increased based on it had been a number of years, but also in comparison to other municipalities, so early to January, Bruce did drop off a proposal with, which outlines some of his recommended increases to the cemetery fees. As I think I said when Bruce is here, I support increase in the fees. Or from my perspective, I, I thought the fees that Bruce had put forth was quite a substantial increase. More than what I thought was appropriate for this municipality, as I said, based on what I, my conversation with folks in town and interacting with folks and comments about that, and some folks felt, you know, fees are, previous fees are a little bit high. But again, I think there should be some increase, it's been a number of years. So I took a hard look at what Bruce had put together, looked at other municipalities, and I came up with my recommendation as what I thought would be more modest increase. Again, based on all those reasons I had mentioned. Plus two, and it's kind of a delicate one, is, you know, a lot of the fees that you're showing an increase, most of it goes to the contractor, very little goes to the town, so, you know, I'm, I'm not. Yeah, so again, I would just say I.
So you're saying the sale of a grave lot goes to the contractor?
No, not the sale, no, not the sale, but the others, you know, the, the.
Well, the, the services that they provide, yes.
Right, but, yeah, so. So again, I, I, as I said, I support an increase, but again, I felt that, you know, and obviously it's up to you, and I, that's, you know.
I wish I had brought my notes, I left my notes that Bruce had recommended, and they were a little different.
Than what he had said, yeah.
It's on the back, you got two pages. I did, but it, the one, I, he was giving us comparisons, if you remember. He compared Norwich, the Catholic Cemetery, Montpelier, and we were wallfully low on all fronts, I mean, wallfully. So if we change this, our, our, these values are in the town report, right?
I think we'll be.
Right, they're listed in the town report, so if we're gonna change them, we're gonna have to change them, pretty ding dong, do the quid.
I, I, I'm saying to myself.
Isn't this part of the budget process?
Well, I mean, I don't know when we've done it, I mean, you're not, you know, the way, with this increase, you're not gonna actually see a lot more come into the budget, because a lot of that, most of it will go to contractors. So it, from my perspective, it's, it's, you're not gonna see but, but a very small change to the revenue.
We were charging. So if we change these fees.
So what will happen is.
There'll be a surplus in that budget for this current, this coming budget?
Well, I, again, I don't see that these fee changes will have but a very, very minor effect on revenues, because most of those will go to the contractor. Very, very little impact on the municipality's revenues. Yet, you know, I don't wanna shortchange a contractor, but I also, you know, they, you know, when, when, when folks go through that process, buying the lots, having the services done, and then all the other things, as we know, you know, the, you know, the ticket costs, it can get very pricey.
Dying ain't cheap.
Yeah, thank you.
We're gonna need a motion.
Yep.
You wanna discuss the changes after we make the motion? Make a motion to approve the cemetery fees as presented?
Second.
Discussion, Charlie.
Just real quick, so there's no change in a, in four graves. If you were to buy four graves, a half lot, which is two graves, is gonna go up from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred and eighty dollars for residents, for non-residents, it'll go from fourteen hundred and forty to seventeen hundred. So you have resident rates and you have non-resident rates. Then going down the resident rate, one lot is six hundred, it's gonna go up to eight hundred. Grave opening is five hundred, uh, what is five hundred is gonna go up to six fifty. Grave opening winter burial is eight hundred, that's gonna go up to nine hundred, cremation is three hundred. That's not doing the cremation, that is taking care of the cremation remains. It's gonna go from three hundred to four hundred. No change on infant interment, setting of markers for VA markers, setting of markers with cement or vault fees. And weekend holiday, holiday burial is gonna go from seven hundred to eight hundred, and cremation for the weekend is three fifty to four fifty. The non-resident mates also go up. And I don't have to worry about the non-residents. But they're, they're also going up symmetrically, and with the exception of the infant interment setting markers for VA with cement vault fee. You want me to read the non-resident revised?
I don't think that's needed.
All right, I think this is reasonable.
I think, I wish I had that, well, Lydia just provided me some information from her notes. Our competitors are much significantly higher.
Well, like we do every, with everything else, we'll catch, we'll catch up to them eventually. We don't need to have spikes.
Yep. No, I agree. Further discussion, Mary?
No, I have nothing.
John?
I think the increases are too much.
Too much for the manager.
I think the one, the manager supplied a more appropriate.
Well, that's what he's, that's what he's proposing, these numbers reflect what the manager's proposing. The grave digger was higher.
So these are the ones he's proposing, that's what we're.
And the one that was proposed was significantly higher.
I think these are reasonable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with them. Sounds like we are. Right, John?
Yes.
Further discussion. Hearing then, all those in favor of the motion of accepting the revised cemetery fees as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is Northfield Energy Committee appointments, Mr. Manager.
Right, thank you, yeah, we're fortunate to have two members from the community that have expressed an interest in being appointed to the Northfield Energy Committee. We have Sheila Bannister and Chandler Murch. Both of these persons have met with the Energy Committee, and it seemed like a good, their committee's comfortable with the appointment, so based on that, we would ask the board to appoint Sheila and Chandler to the Northfield Energy Committee.
Make a motion to appoint Sheila Bannister and Chandler Murch to the Energy Committee.
Second.
Move to second, discussion.
Thank you very much for your interest in helping out, it's, uh, it's great that you're volunteering, and it's nice to see you come off the hill. And I haven't met Sheila yet, but, uh, thank you, Sheila. Oh, was that you back there? So that hat blocks your vision anyway, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing then, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, five zero zero, thank you very much. This is cool.
Do either of you wanna say hi or say anything?
Oh, don't get Chandler started, you don't shut up. Now, who's Chandler?
Oh, you are.
He's the guy that looks like, uh, Valinsky in Ukraine. I call him Mr. Body Guy.
Thank you for being willing to serve.
That's cool. That's a really good topic.
And that committee has done a lot, a lot of good in this community over the years. Next item on the agenda, appointment of individual to receive municipal code of ethics alleged violation complaints, Mr. Manager.
So as part of the ongoing statute requirements that the state enacted in regards to municipal ethics, in their, in the policies or legislature does that the municipality actually appoint an individual to take in any alleged violations of the municipal code of ethics, as you recall, you appointed the manager to the, as liaison, but again, for somebody to be appointed just to take those in, kind of file those, keep those under protective cover, and then get them through the process. So again, it's just another step of many things folks ought to take, so from my perspective, it makes sense to appoint Ken McCann to that, just based on the keeper of the.
He's just looking around, is there a Ken McCann?
The personnel files.
Right.
You must have told him in advance, right?
No, yes.
I think he's seen the agenda, and, well, it doesn't say his name.
I know.
I was wondering who this was gonna be, I was, I was worried.
Do we need a motion and then talk about it?
Yes.
This is a personnel issue, the manager's in charge of personnel, why is the select board chiming in on us?
Well, we could appoint ourselves, because it doesn't have to be a municipal employee, it has to be an individual or a body. So the select board could be the body that receives the complaints. It is up to us to determine.
Yeah.
Yeah, the manager's making a recommendation.
You can.
Make a motion to appoint Ken to the code of ethics.
To receive the, like.
Keeper, keeper of ethics.
Do I hear a second?
John did.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, John. Move to the second, further discussion.
Uh, we have a conflict of interest ordinance. And it has to also have a representative that is the keeper of ethics of conflicts. And conflict of interest ordinance, at the time it was created, there was a village trustee board and a select board, and the village trustee and the select board each had a member of the village. Each municipal board had a member on the conflict of interest representative. Is there a way that we can conclude this is conflict of interest, assigning him as a conflict of interest?
I, I think those are two separate matters. When was the last time we had a conflict of interest subcommittee meeting on that?
Yeah, we're supposed to be an ethics committee, we don't have, according to that.
I think we have a lot more work to do.
Yes.
So we have a conflict of interest ordinance that's basically void.
Well, I wouldn't say void, I would say it needs dusting off and updating.
So does our personnel policy, but where's that?
Well, we'll be seeing that in two weeks.
I'm looking for the subcommittee. We'll run it through the subcommittee.
All right.
No, it's not going to the subcommittee again, no. It got lost in the subcommittee for the last two years.
I know.
It was almost a final draft, it should come to the board.
Right, all right, let's argue for more. So, but in all sincerity to your question, I would say no, don't commingle these, but I do think at a future board meeting, we take up the ordinance and updating thereof.
Yes, we'll have all that.
Do I hear the concurance, the majority of the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So the motion on the table is to appoint Ken McCann, the keeper of the complaint, ethic complaints.
He's the receiver of ethic, yeah.
Receiver.
And keep a secure copy of his personnel files.
And keep a log of the complaints.
Yeah.
Keep a log of it.
Yeah.
Further discussion. Hearing then, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
No problem.
I was just trying to not cut in.
Okay.
Um, okay, I just wanted to bring up, this is one of the elements, but I know things that we could also be doing to make sure we're in compliance with this new Act 171. We need to have on the website a copy of the municipal code of ethics, which is easy to do, that already exists, and we have to have the whistleblower protection on the website. Those are already available, so it seems like those could go up immediately.
Well, I guess my thought was, it looks for, I think the board has to approve.
No, it's the state's, the copy of the state's municipal code of ethics, their copy. We have to have our own conflict of interest policies as well, and we have to create.
Okay, we're just gonna incorporate the state's in ours, and then.
No, that's supposed to be, they're separate, like, if you follow the links, it's, there's a link that says what you need to put on.
Their actual policy, okay.
Yes, so there's that, it's just a document that the state, from the state that we need to post on the website.
Yeah, okay.
As well as the whistleblower protection, those exist already. Then we need to also post any town ordinances, rules, personnel policies that are relevant to ethics. So some of those already exist, like, the conflict of interest that we currently have should be available on the website with those other two documents.
The ordinance there was in there.
They should be just together, like, like a whole.
We were gonna update, because I think there's some things missing for.
Yes, we need to update them, so that's it.
Yeah.
The purpose of bringing this up is to figure out what work we still have to do, because some of the things can go on the website, some of the things we need to work on, like the personnel policy and the conflict of interest ordinance. And then the other thing that we don't have at all yet is that we have to have a procedure for investigation and enforcement of complaints. And there's the model, the LCT has a model that we could.
Right, and that's what we'll have in two weeks, that's what I've been working, yeah.
We'll bring that in two weeks, okay, and then they also have a model complaint form. Um, that would be what would also be available, okay.
We'll get that, so with the next meeting, we'll have the personnel policy, the procedures for dealing with complaints and a form.
Okay, and then the other requirement is that the person who receives complaints also needs to track members having taken the training.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was my question.
So we're now all, as, before September thirtieth, required to take the training.
Yeah, September.
And a hundred and twenty days after being elected, and every few years after, for all legislative quasi judicial and managers. So that's all of us.
Yep.
Plus we have like the Board of Abatement, Board of Civil Authority, DRB.
And the commissioners, is they, oh, they're not quasi judicial.
I don't know if they would be.
They vote on stuff.
I think they are.
Who's that?
Manny. Does it say quasi?
It says quasi judicial.
It does.
It's not, it's a 55-minute online training. And I looked at it today. No, I haven't done it today because I wasn't, I wanted to make sure about how we were going to report that we'd done it. But I checked and you like fill out a form when you complete watching it.
All right. So how did you get there? Because I looked here and said link and I looked for the link that I missed.
I can send it to everybody, the link, but we could also put that somewhere public too. But it's on, how did I get there? If you, if you go to the Vermont State Ethics Commission and you look down in their training, you can find it. And then there's a tab for state employees and then there's a municipal tab. And then once you go in there, there's, you watch the recording and then you fill out a form. But then we would report to Ken that we've completed it.
I'm sure we get a certificate or something back that we've completed it.
It says to save this, you're going to email receipt. So you need to save that.
And then we could forward that on to Ken.
Yeah. But I was thinking with that, we could make sure that we get organized after town meeting to get everybody who needs to do that training as well as everyone who needs to do the open meeting law training.
Yep.
And I don't know how expensive it would be to have the LCT come actually do an in-person open meeting law training. If it's not outrageously expensive, it might be really nice to have an opportunity to actually ask questions. Because I know recently somebody else watched the same open meeting law training that I did and came away with completely different ideas about what it meant, so... But that's sort of a tangent. But because we're going to be required to do both those things, we might want to make a process where after town meeting, this is when those things happen. And maybe we could invite anybody who wants to do the open meeting law training to all do it together in the community room or...
Anything else?
Oh, decided to update our policies.
Further discussion. Don't forget we have a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Five zero zero. Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
Next item on the agenda, tell managers' report.
Thank you. So I noted in my report, we're all working on the annual report. Hope to have a hard copy to the printers February 4th. On that same day, we'll have an actual version on the website to meet the requirements, so I'm just working on that. In the packet and in my report, I noted that the state of Vermont did send the municipality a letter notifying the town that their process to scope and fund construction improvements for the historic bridges, the Rabbit Hall and the three covered bridges has changed. Unfortunately, what they're saying is that there's been a change from what they had reported to the town in the past, where they said that 100% of all construction and improvements would be paid for by the state. Unfortunately, I think they overextended themselves and ran out of funds. And now they're saying that the process for those three or four bridges fortunately will continue. But now with the change, there will be a local match to the municipality. And I checked again today, based on things we're hearing at the federal government, but also just the process. The state has assured us that they will continue with the scoping process and that they will pay for the majority of the construction cost. But it's looking like the municipality ended up having a 5% local match for that project. Now it's kind of fallen to the same process as the Main Street Bridge. Again, where the municipality, where the, I'm sorry, where the state funds the majority of the project, but it does require a 5% match. I pressed, I said, is this anything to do with what you're hearing from the federal government? They assured us that it wasn't. It's just, and they were a little sheepish. They said they kind of overextended themselves. And also to the construction costs for all these projects statewide have really escalated. So, yeah, I was quite upset when I saw that letter. I was, what? And I quickly reached out to them on the positive. I mean, at least they're still going to cover, you know, between the state, what the state spends 99%, 5%. I really pushed back, I re, you know, just saying it's unfortunate how much they can do. Cross Brothers Dam project. As I noted, the engineers have completed those plans to 60%. I think now it's close to 80% complete. And they do plan to come to the select board February 11th to present those plans. The engineer and Karina Daly from Natural Resources Council confident that that project can continue moving forth. It is FEMA funds. I have reached out to folks at state and others about whether funds for that are in jeopardy based on what the federal government's doing. They don't feel it is because it's already been in the queue, so to speak, but they can't make any promises. So, but again, the engineering process continues along. Excuse me. Pool House project. We had a great meeting with the architect to kick off the pool house reevaluation process. The building's subcommittee was there, the liability, some members of the committee were there, had a great meeting to kick that process off. The engineer came to the meeting with three preliminary concepts for the redesign of the interior of that building. There's two proposals that are kind of more of a dramatic interior change to the building. And then there's one more modest change to the building, which will meet all of the goals of the things we were hoping to. Unfortunately, the two more radical changes to the building are anticipated to be quite expensive. So where the committee left it was that the engineer, I'm sorry, the architect will go back, give us some cost estimates and then come back to the committee. But it was a good give and take. It was good to see that process. Real quick, Wall Street pedestrian improvements, as you recall, Ms. Bowery, got a grant for those improvements on Wall Street. The first step is actually have an engineer design that. So I've sent out an RFP for engineering design services for that process. I was a little nervous about sending it out. I still haven't gotten, we, I'm sorry, the town still has not gotten a grant agreement from the state about the project. But the state said, well, we're hoping within the next few weeks. So just go ahead and release the RFP with the understanding that we can't incur any costs until we get the agreement. But that process is underway. Quickly, last thing, trying to get out in front on some of these highway things. We did reach out to the street sweeping contractor. Got on their list, we're first on the list, so that will start. And then we contacted three or four line strippers to get on that early as well, so. Real quick, the last thing is we are working on DEI training. Mary Schirrmann had some great ideas. To reach out to the state, help with racial equality. They will come and talk with members of the municipality about that. They won't actually do the training, but they may be able to set us up with folks to do that. Be nice, not to be cheap, but be a lot less than getting that contractor from far away to come to do on site. So hopefully, within the next short period of time, we'll get that. The other option is we could do it completely online, which we can do very quickly. But I think there was a sense to...
Yeah, it was a long time ago, Jeff.
That's, that's all I have to do.
Does our law firm provide that service? I know the law firm that we have provides that service.
Thanks.
Okay, next item on the agenda, board members' comments, concerns, questions, Charlie.
I'm good, thank you.
Mary.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Number one, there's a lot of things about, about bridges. But first, could we have an update on getting a consultant for zoning regs?
Yeah, so we, we're preparing the application to get a grant, as we said. And the grant applications are due, I think, February 28th, maybe. So I actually did a webinar on that today, so yeah.
So the due date on that is February 28th?
I don't, I think that's when it is. I know we've got...
Something like that.
Yeah.
Well, that would be good because, you know, that all came up again just now when we were talking about energy requirements. But it also came up before when we were, when we blessed the zoning ordinance, that we wanted to make sure that they, that we could update it so that, you know, developable lands could be identified. And we need help with that. And so I hope that that happens.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, it's a grant application. I mean, there's no guarantee that the municipality would get those. But Tom and I are working on that and we do our best to get a very solid application in.
Yeah, right, might, if we have any money to get. Updates on the five covered bridges. Now, there's five, because I remember Carolyn came by the other day and said, you know, she has concerns about the Mosley Bridge, I believe it's called.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, and, and that's the bridge, another bridge that tourists come to see and photograph all the time. So we have to be, you know, we have to dress up a little bit, you know? People are coming, we got to look good.
So I did contact Daniel's Construction, Matt Belden. They do a lot of this repair work. And so he and I looked at him and he's coming up with a proposal to go and fix him. You know, obviously, we've got to try to also come up with a way to prevent damage. You know, and actually, Matt did say, boy, they love hitting those bridges, don't they? I haven't got yet.
Well, one of the bridges in Lyndonville hit five times a year.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, and so that's what happens to us too.
So I don't know if anybody saw the report on that last week on Channel 3. They engaged the local...
Oh, yes, yes.
Regional...
I read about it.
Trade school.
Yeah.
And they have fabricated a steel barrier that will be put inside the bridge that will shear the truck off instead of shearing the bridge off.
So I've given that and see if they can come for the price.
Solid beam, this thick.
Yeah, yeah, uh, uh, yeah. I'm there.
Hopefully, kids are wearing their safety belts.
Yeah, I know.
Well, we'll let, by likelihood, put according to signs saying.
It's a very, very tough subject, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's perennial. And I also wanted to know how are we doing with cost recovery?
With the insurance cost?
Yes.
Yeah, still doing battle, but hopefully we can get, get that solved.
Do you want me to call somebody up with my probation officer voice?
No, that's...
So, so the question is, have we received any funding from insurance?
Not yet, no.
So we have not?
No.
But this has been going on for six months.
Yeah, a little bit longer, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like, this is, this is trying to...
What's the problem?
Yeah.
So they went out and looked at it and they said, where's the damage?
Oh, for God's sake.
They're quibbling over that.
Who is it?
The insurance company.
This is from one incident?
Yeah. So I...
And while they're quibbling, another incident happens. Aye.
On which one?
I'm just saying.
It's definitely been more than one.
Oh, man, god, yeah.
I want to thank you for the letter you sent to residents, which was in our packet. And I want to thank you for that. And residents on the slaughterhouse, and I want to know, did you get any replies yet?
Not yet. Hopefully, we will.
Okay, so what are your plans to follow up?
It's a good question.
You can say that a cranky lady on the select board really wants to follow up. So that would be a good thing. And you did address my question about bridge updates. So our programs are still viable, we think, hopefully. Yeah. Okay.
Funding.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, I think we need to start planning for the 5% match for the five covered bridges, or the three covered bridges at the very least.
Yeah, I mean, I did some math, say there five, or at least three of them, right?
Three.
And then, you know, I'm willing to take a field trip up to Lyndonville and find out about what kind of thing they are doing.
Another month, we'll have it installed.
And I'll take pictures. We'll enjoy this. This will be a fun thing. I want to see that. I, on another matter, I'm hap, I want to make sure that, that it gets on the agenda, that we're going to talk about the comment again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I get it, here.
And then I wanted to give a report from the Riverwalk Path people. And we've, we've got, as you know, the, the section, we did, came up with phasing, A, B, C, and D. And section D is the first section. And it is upstairs from here. And also down, we have a picture of it and a discussion of it upstairs. And we also have a discussion, a picture and discussion down at the municipal building. Plus, I am putting up small, smaller copies. You know, it's kind of difficult to make small ones. But we made them, I think they're 11 by 17. And we can put there, and I was happy to say that one went into the, to the good measure, in the bathroom. Because that's where everybody sees it. So it's in the bathroom, but it's going to, that was their suggestion. And I like it. And so I have some other places online to, on my list to stop off and, and, and drop it off. I took it to South Village Mobile, which was, the people in the South Village kind of are left out to themselves. And so I took it out there, but it wasn't real clear that they would ever be able to put it up, so...
Okay, well, thank you.
Anybody, you know anybody in the South Village that wants to see that? They can ask, oh gee, where is it? Maybe they'll put it up. So that's all I have about that.
John?
No, I don't have anything tonight. We discussed it on Friday.
Lydia?
I'm all set.
I'm all set. Public participation unscheduled. Anyone in the room that'd like to be recognized? Anyone? Go ahead, Al, all right?
Yeah, I have a slight question on the heating system that we're talking about putting in and addressing. Because electricity is not the option right now. Because in the summertime, just the air conditioning running, the grid is maxed. So if you start using electricity to heat all the houses, it's going to be, it's estimated it's going to be in trillions of dollars for the electric companies to upgrade the grid. They only handle what people are asking for. It's just not, it's not feasible. So if we want to see a 20 to 30% increase in our light bills to furnish and to upgrade the grid, that's wonderful. I have a problem paying it, but it might be, some other people might not. So we have to stop and think about that. And I have a cousin that put in a geothermal system in their house. And with that, their light bill has increased by 25%. light bill has increased by 25% just by running those pumps constantly and keeping them going. So food for thought.
That's what the Energy Committee is researching and trying to figure out.
Yep, and we look forward to hearing that presentation.
We'll get it on the agenda.
Anyone online that would like to be recognized? Make a motion to adjourn. Further discussion. Hearing then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Standing five zero zero. Word dismissed.
Dismissed.
Every time it's happening, it's happening.
Send me an email.
Yeah.
No idea.
Yeah.
Yes, that's very good, Ken. I like that.
I talked to Mary about that before the meeting, about having to worry about the board, and this is going to be other government.
Yeah.
That's what Charlie's wife recommended.
Phenomenal.
Yep, yeah, they signed that.
Cass, you recommended that?
Uh-huh.
Oh, we got something to sign, don't we?
Yep.
Yeah. He's going to try to have a contract proposal based on just the structures happening.
Yeah. On the cover of the Rolling Stone.